Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Here.
Randy Gentry.
Here.
Brenda Wilson.
Here.
Brad Anderson.
Here.
David Thompson.
Here. Correcting the journal, proceeding with the necessary December 3rd and December 10th, 2024. Is that better? We will just accept the minutes?
That's right, Mr. President, with the fact that several of the council members were not council members at those meetings. I understand they're not being able to vote for it, so it's just that three council members who were just accepting them, there would need to be no motion.
Okay. January 7th, 2025. If there are any issues, we need to correct them now. If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes pass. Communications from elected officials, other officials, and agencies of the county. Adam?
Adam Grossman, Superintendent, Vigo County Parks. I apologize for anybody that heard this this morning already.
Turn your mic on.
I think it's on.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll just talk louder.
Thank you.
So, I apologize for anybody that's already heard this. I'll make this like three minutes, but the parks have a ton of things going on. There's several new members of council. First and foremost, I'll make sure I get an email out and give me a call if you want to tour the parks or tour of things going on, just get ahold of me. I'd be much obliged to do that. But I wanted to run through a lot of the things we've got going on here real fast for everybody. I believe it was said last week that about our skid steer broke down and real expensive. Luckily enough, it happened early enough that we could adjust how much money we spent on new equipment, so I'll be coming back next meeting to do an out-of-series transfer from new equipment to equipment repair. That way, we can take that on the chin for the year with anticipated bills. So, we'll just buy one less Kubota and make sure we get through the year is the plan. Moving on to better things, we have an overlook at Dewey Point coming in. That was through the ARPA stuff. Thank you to the commissioners for helping make that happen. We'll move that to fall. We're waiting on some permitting. We're waiting on some permitting through the state, so hopefully we'll be able to get that going here this late summer or fall. West Tarahook Little League Football moved in this last summer at Bicentennial Park. That's one of the first big organizations that actually really has used that park a lot. There were hundreds of people out there every week, starting in about June, so they wanted to make themselves more of a fixture of that park, come in and did a lot of work, some clearing, leveling, different things of that nature, so that they can have a football field to practice on and make their home. So, and that's just revitalizing an old softball, baseball field that used to be there. So, they'll be in there full force in June. Along that thought process, we closed on AMVETS. Council gave the money for property acquisition in lieu of the grant that we're going to go for. We could just do it better in-house, just plow through, get it done. So, we closed on AMVETS a couple of weeks ago. We'll own that in July. So, there opens up a lot more possibilities there as well and really completes that front edge of Bicentennial Park. Got a new shelter, a new trail connection coming for Bicentennial Park. Pedestrian walkway is really popular and there are a ton of people using it. Right now, there's no delineated connection between the Bicentennial, or between the pedestrian walkway and the existing Wabashiki Trail. So, we'll have that right now. They just got to pick their route through Dresser the best they can. So, we'll have a delineated route to be able to make that connection. Probably the biggest project we've got, the most impactful, is the Griffin Bike Park Building. We just started moving dirt today to get ready for it. Hopefully, here in about three or four weeks, contractor will move in. As anything else, that building come in above what we were hoping it would come in, but we're able to do several change orders to get that knocked down. Several donations have come in and now have made that a tangible building for us and much needed. Rich is our bike park manager, has several holes in his floor of his office trailer now. The mice have pretty much just taken away the rest of the trailer. Then we got another trailer that's full of mold and we don't even allow people in it anymore. So, that park had zero storage, zero operational space, thanks to the health department, commissioners, and council for being able to make that building happen. The opportunity for youth programming at Griffin Bike Park really stands on this building to be able to get the youth to be able to get them out there, provide transportation, and provide these kids bicycles to get on as well as life skills classes. Just a huge opportunity for Griffin Bike Park. It'll also have a vendor that will move in, so then we're going to get some lease space out of that as well as another byproduct to this building. So, super excited to have that start. Fowler Park Gatehouse, Fowler Park Hawthorne Park overlooked, both are going to get new roofs this year. Some attention, some vandalism happened on a couple, but those are happening. And if you've not heard yet, we've got two disc golf courses coming to the Vigo County Parks. We had generous donation, $120,000 to get the one at Prairie Creek done and in and designed done on Fowler Park by the best designer in the United States. We expect over 30,000 people to come to the disc golf course at Fowler Park. It'll be top 20 in the U.S. is what we're thinking right now. So, we're a little ways from that. We just applied for a grant to help us get a lot of that build done, but doing it in-house. We hope to get this done for about $100,000 instead of 200 or 300, trying to contract it out. So, our guys will chip away at it this summer and get that going when it is. That's going to be a huge draw for Vigo County. We've got new rental cabins. Again, thanks to the commissioners for helping us out with that as long as, and also a wagon, a rental wagon for Fowler Park. Those are going to be really neat amenities that we've never had, and I think people are going to love those. So, awesome to see those come in as well. We've got some roadwork coming up here within the parks. Self-rent kiosk unit that we're hoping to have out at Hawthorne Park. We don't have to staff it. People just swipe a card, they get their kayak, they get their PDF, they get their paddle. We make money on that transaction. We don't have to worry about hiring anybody to try to cover it. Accessible pathways, playgrounds, and grills. There's a new playground coming in at Fowler Park, which is part of the master planning process. People are screaming, "We don't have playground for those two to five years old." So, replacing that old, cracked, busted-up equipment. Successful pancake breakfast last Saturday had like 100, or 430 people come to Fowler Park to eat pancakes. Almost all of them, I would say, come out to Prairie Creek, gave a tour of our maple syrup operation, and we just made 12 more gallons of syrup today. For those that have been begging, we sell out about as soon as we make it. So, we made 12 more gallons a day of maple syrup. So, that is my 18-point highlight of a lot of the projects. There's a lot of things I've forgotten. Could not make it happen without you guys, commissioners, health department, and our maintenance staff out there that really make this stuff go and do a lot of work behind the scenes. So, anytime you guys have questions, want to tour or anything of that, just get ahold of me and I'd be happy to do so. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Any other elected officials?
Top act to follow.
Okay, reports from committees. There are none. Resolutions and ordinances other than appropriations. A, Ordinance 2025-01, authorizing and approving the investment of public funds by the Vigo County Treasurer.
Yes.
Page six of our booklet.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. What you have before you is a ordinance authorizing the treasurer of Vigo County to invest public funds pursuant to Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.7. Back in 2022, a resolution was adopted in conformance with statute that outlined the circumstances under which the county treasurer can invest public monies. In that statute, it authorizes that policy to extend up to four years. Here to four, the council has always done that on a year-by-year basis. So, every year since 2022, the ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds has expired on December 31st of that year. So, that expired for 2024. At the end of 2024, this ordinance authorizes our new treasurer to invest public funds up through December 31st of this year. I would note in my conversations with our treasurer that I think somewhere in excess of $8 million was earned on the interest from the investment of public funds during the last calendar year, and you know, a lot of that is attributable to ARPA dollars sitting in the bank, but a lot of it's just attributable to sound investment policies. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the treasurer's here to do the same if council has any.
Questions from council? No counts, no questions, I will accept a motion.
Motion we approve.
Motion by Councilman Anderson and second by Councilwoman Wilson. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ordinances relating to appropriations. First one is the Salary Ordinance 2025-01, Council Administrator, page eight. This is to add the position back to the 2025 salary ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Any questions? If no questions, I'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wagler and a second by Councilwoman Wilson. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. B, Additional Appropriation 2025-01, Council Administrator, that is on page nine. This is for the appropriation of the salary. Salary $53,172. FICA $4,068. Perf $7,551. Insurance $12,926 for a total of $77,717. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Wagler. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. C, Additional Appropriation 2025-02, Council Member Insurance, is on page 10. If you remember this appropriation, this is an additional appropriation for insurance for council members. Any discussion? No discussion, I will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gentry, second by Councilwoman Wilson. We'll take a roll call vote please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. D, Amendment Salary Ordinance 2025-02, Assessors Office. I think Kevin is here. That's page 11 of our booklet as well.
Council members, council president, I would like to start by, last week, Councilperson Ellis, you had asked me how long that position in Harrison had been vacated for, and I didn't have a good answer at that time. Since then, I looked into it. That seat, that position was vacated in January of 2024. She started taking resumes and applications in February of 2024. It's still vacant today.
Thank you.
Other than that, I have presented the council with a little bit more information. Another question had been how the two accounts, the general fund and the reassessment fund will be affected because it's both accounts involved in this. I did highlight on that, as you can see, general fund, it would actually be putting $33,821 back into the general fund. It would need an additional appropriation of reassessment fund for $22,915-01, which would be a total savings to the county of $10,905.99. Since then, I have had discussions with another office holder, I've had discussions with council, and I know there are some reservations around this, and I think some of them have to do with the fact that the Baker-Tilly study placed the offices and the staff in the positions they needed to be in, and we were supposed to go through a process to make any type of changes. I just found out, so during those conversations, I decided, okay, maybe that's an approach I need to make, request the council to table this, may approach Baker-Tilly and see if, given them new information, they would make a great change. I was informed this evening that we do not have a contract with Baker-Tilly. The study that you've got is the study, that's the blueprint of where you started. So, any changes you make going forward is a change that you either decide is appropriate or not appropriate. If you try to get Baker-Tilly involved, and that was back in '23, everything's going to be a charge call-by-call. So, I just wanted to throw that out there because I didn't know it until tonight. So, at this point, I guess it's up to the council, and I'll defer to the council. If you feel like you still need information or you still want to research this, it's your leisure to table it, or if you disagree with it, vote it down, but I'll refer that to the council.
Discussion from council? Councilman Gentry?
The only thing I would say is, this kind of leaves us an awkward situation. I don't want to prolong this discussion for a period of time. I have several questions, but if this is going to be tabled, then there's no reason to discuss it at this time because we'd be tabling it.
Correct. You want to make a motion to table?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Motion by Councilman Gentry. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Wilson has a second. Roll call vote please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicki Wagler.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Kevin, I assume that is all the requests, all the way to 2025-03, correct?
Yes, this is everything combined.
I assumed. Thank you. So, that will move us to J, Additional Appropriation 2025-04, Security Cameras at the Courthouse.
Good evening, council. Also with me tonight, Tom Little and Steve Clark with Innovative Communication Solutions to answer any questions you might have. After the meeting last week, there were a few more questions. That's why we brought Steve along. Also, there was a request to, just to get an idea of what it would cost for cameras inside the courthouse also, and that's what was presented to you earlier tonight. So, I guess I will open the floor to any questions you might have for any of us.
Questions from council? Councilman Gentry?
So, I do appreciate the fast turnaround to get us the whole picture. Councilmember Ellis and myself, we were questioning the quality of the cameras, making sure that we were getting a good quality image that we could use in the future. But I think one of the other things that came up, and I brought this up right at the end, was could you bring us numbers and why not complete the whole package? Before, understanding that the funds were designated as ARPA funds and there was a limited finite amount of money, it seemed to me that, taking a look at all the cameras and having a complete system inside and out, so that we're not band-aiding this together and patching this together, made a lot of sense. So, the numbers that you've presented, the only question I would have is to, I guess, Commissioner, Tom, Mr. Clark? Yep. I did, I did a little background work on this, trying to understand, using the actual same model numbers of the camera, and trying to compare prices and just get an update on the cost that's actually bid in here compared to what I can see on the internet.
Sure, so the part numbers that you see, I'm sorry, the part numbers that you see on the quote there, those are the primary model number of the camera. That I did not include all of the mounting hardware and things that go associated with that. They can actually be several hundred dollars in addition to those, because otherwise you'd have a five-page list of parts that you really wouldn't. It doesn't really play a significant role in the overall, you know, spec of it, because you, you can't specify a certain camera to go outside and mount it on a pole without having these other pieces. So, those other pieces are assumed in my, where I'm, where I was at on this quote. So.
Okay. So, I would say, for an example, let's just take the first, the first camera on here. So, and, and I considered the idea that there was probably some hardware, but many of the cameras are actually packaged with hardware. And for an example, when I Googled the same camera model number, I came up with the camera costing retail $1,590, and, and your bid is for $2,0799. So, while I'm not going to get down to small amounts, when I looked at the whole thing and added it up, what I could decipher from the actual camera-to-camera comparison, we were approaching like a $10,000 difference, and I asked Tom if he could get with you and discuss this, because my thought process was is, even if you had a slightly better price on the cameras, brought it to a little less than, some of these cameras were like 150% of retail, again, I think it may be some pieces of the hardware, but, but my thought was that we could actually get a complete package, you know, a better price on the complete package. So, thoughts on that? I mean, I want to make sure that I am comparing apples to apples as well, sir.
Sure. So, one of the things I did update on this, some of the part numbers, when we put this all together, we were trying to make things fit in the price that you had to work with, right? And, and so, we were, we were compromising on some of the cameras we're not. And our industry and security camera industry, an eight-megapixel cameras generally considered your top-of-the-line quality of video stream. You can do higher than that, but the price goes up significantly. Well, some of those prices I had put, I corrected the pricing on some of these, because I had put the pricing of an eight-megapixel camera in place of a five-megapixel actual, the part number. So, those are reflected now on here, and as far as the pricing for what you find online, I can't really speak a lot to that. I can say that all the pricing that I've put on here is all manufacturer-suggested retail pricing. We are, this is, these are all manufactured by Axis Communications. They are, they're an NDAA-compliant National Defense Authorization Act, so they're allowed to go inside government facilities, or government entities that are funded by the federal government. A few years ago, they had a big blacklist that came out. So, something to keep in mind is not all cameras are allowed, and it's, it's quite a significant difference, but.
And, and so, Mr. Clark, I did the exact same model number.
Okay.
Okay, so, and these were, these, I mean, every one of the cameras was pricing out. I think the minimum I found was a 40% over retail that I could locate, and I used multiple, I actually got screenshots of this.
Okay.
So, I don't want to beat you up. I mean, you run a business and you've got to bid this out, but my, my concern was is that I want to get the, the most bang for a buck for the taxpayers.
Sure.
So, if you want to put my mind at ease, just look at the first part number, and again, I don't want to belabor this to a great deal, but when you're bidding out $2,799 for the camera, and I could locate it for $1,590, are you telling me that the hardware for that particular camera is?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
No, I'm telling you that $1,599, I probably can't buy it for that. I'm, I don't know where you received your pricing from, but I can certainly go through and, and revisit this, but, I mean, $1,599, I can assure you, I do not have a 100% markup or 85% markup on any of these products.
Okay.
So, I mean.
I just, I just, I didn't do any massive research here. I just went into Google and typed in the camera and model number that you put on your bid.
Sure.
Also, in regards to the camera license, I went directly to the actual company, this Exact Vision.
Yep.
License. And two, two things. One, I noticed that, and this was another thing that I had talked to Tom during the middle of the week, I called you about this, but I noticed that from the company, direct, not, not a secondary service, but from Exact Vision, that they offered licensing packages that once you reached the 10 cameras, the licensing went down.
That's not accurate.
It was directly from their website.
Okay. We've been an Exact Vision dealer for about 15 years now, and we have maintained probably 100 of these systems. Anytime you go from above, so your start licensing is for systems that have 16 cameras or fewer, and they, their new retail price, I just looked it up this weekend when I was researching this, $76. Your professional licensing, $240 per camera. If you go enterprise, I believe it's 300 and, I think it's $340, something like that. The enterprise version is what technically is what is already there, but after speaking with the IT department and determining that they do not need that level of software, we went with the professional version, which is $240 per, per camera.
Okay, and that's, that's the number that I located, because when I was, I was researching, it was, you, you had $350 in the bid?
That was originally the enterprise.
And I saw that the bundle package of 10 more cameras, I found it to be the $240. So, it seems like to me the price has come down. Maybe it's a different?
It's a different product.
Okay.
Yeah, different product.
All right.
As a matter of fact, I would almost assume that I would, I would really like to look that first model number up just to see what the, what the prices are, because like I said, I made some corrections on here, because originally I quoted some five-megapixel part numbers, but I had eight-megapixel pricing, so I fixed those on here, so I'm not sure.
And Councilmember Ellis may have questions. He was, he's more in tune with the actual megapixels, but before, before I move on, it would be my opinion that doing the inside-outside all at one time rather than do the patchwork, even though it's a, it's an increase, makes more sense to me. So, from your professional standpoint, is, is that a correct approach to this, or, or can we get by by just doing the outside and leaving the inside at the lower, lower level of megapixels and quality?
Just so you know, I did a little more research, because the, before, we were just adding seven cameras, pretty simple project, but once you start adding this number of cameras, requires a lot more hardware capabilities of the server. And so, when I looked at the server that's there right now, technically, the operating system is 2016, it's end of life, and the hardware was nowhere near sufficient to support all of these new IP cameras. So, that was why one of these line items is for a new server, because the server that's there, again, it's six years old, and it, it just. there, again, it's six years old, and it, it just wasn't equipped to be able to handle the additional video streams. Because even though there are only 35 cameras on here, there's actually a total of like 48 or something streams because of the additional multi-lens cameras. So, it does, even though it looks like 35 cameras, it's almost essentially like it's processing 40-something. Does that answer your, your question?
Mr. President, I'll stop my own question at this time. There's somebody else, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ellis?
I, I don't have any questions necessarily. I was just to make the suggestion that I think you've got a panel up here of councilpersons that want to see security increased and want to see the cameras go in. Obviously, there's some questions around pricing and, and maybe some of the product. I would suggest that we don't take a chance of this failing tonight and instead table it, and give them a chance to put the full bid together, rebid it, and maybe come back with three bids. That way, we have the ability to compare and then just take the best of the three bids.
How long have you used this? How long have we used this company? And, part of the reason we went with them was because we've used them before.
Yeah.
And everything would be integrated, yes. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows, this was not a patchwork job that we did. We were, last year when we started thinking about this, Mr. Little came to me, or came to us and asked us. We didn't realize we didn't have any cameras. I don't think anybody did realize that. The first option was ARPA money, because we had ARPA money, and then it, we decided to no, let's go a different route and use lit special purpose, because we could use that ARPA money for something else. This was what we were asked to get prices on, was the outside of the cameras. Again, this is not a patchwork job. And, and we weren't trying to go cheap here, and we weren't trying to go expensive. I mean, I've learned in business that you usually go in the middle of the road. If you go the highest, you know, you're overpaying. If you go the lowest, you're not getting what you pay for. It's, it's your decision, I guess, how you want to proceed, but...
Commissioner, I, I just...
Councilman Gentry?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm, if, if, I'm not trying to offend by somebody saying that it's patchwork. What I'm trying to say is, is that we're putting in higher-tech external cameras, we have lower-tech internal cameras that some people are not as happy with. And my only question was, is rather than try to mix apples and oranges, let's try to put one package in that takes us forward in a smart way, moving, you know, that we're not, six months from now, as, as Tom had said, you know, it's like, I'll be back with a, a, another look at the inside. I just felt like it was just an opportunity for us, sir, to, to, to put this together. So, I'm not trying to offend anybody by saying it's patchwork. I just want you to know that I feel like this is the appropriate thing to do. It's the best vision forward.
Normally, normally, we don't have a council that wants to spend more money than what we're requesting, so it, it was a little bit odd, I guess, so...
I think we've established tonight that if you do move forward with more cameras, it's going to be over $50,000. So, there's a public bid process in place that will require three bids if you go over $50,000. And we're there, so just a reminder.
That's what I was going to verify with Michael.
Yeah.
Over a certain, what is that dollar amount? Over $50,000?
Well, I think the, the numbers, I think it's $150,000 is the formal bid process. For anything under that, you're supposed to get three quotes.
Okay.
You know, from somebody who does the service that you're seeking to engage. So, there's an exception for that, for professional services, which, you know, when you consider the fact that the sheriff's department, I think, has these cameras all throughout the current jail, you know, I mean, you could justify the integration of that system and this system in using a preferred vendor, I think, especially if they're, you know, designated by the federal government as kind of an approved provider. So, I don't think with the software integration that would be necessary to get these cameras, you know, visible for the people who need to see them, you would need to get other quotes, but it, you know, it would be the presenter's discretion as to whether or not they do that.
Okay.
So, I, and the short answer is, I don't think it's necessary for additional quotes, as long as the council's comfortable that, you know, that the prices reflect the quality of the service provider.
Okay. That's clear.
Could you clarify that this is the same company and that we're using on the new jail?
Yes, ma'am.
The same cameras and things? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wager, did you have something?
Mr. President, I, I wanted to say, you know, I apologize, I have laryngitis, and Mark, don't look so happy about that, okay? I, I think it's important to get these things up, you know, I mean, I would hate to think that we didn't put them up and waited and so forth. And I, I agree, it, it makes a lot of sense to have the same thing inside, outside, blah, blah, blah. But I think we ought to get them up, got the money, and I'd like to just freaking do it. That's not a formal motion, freaking do it, but I'd sure like to freaking do it tonight.
Could I, could I ask you a question? So, if we, if we voted, or if they voted tonight to approve what we've requested for the outside cameras, and they, and we want to come back next month to do the, the inside, is it going to be just the difference between the outs, the outside and the inside? Is there a savings by doing it all together?
I don't know that there's really a savings per se, just because at this point, we're really looking at almost all new. There were 12 camera, existing IP cameras that are there that, that we were planning on reusing. And I am, you're not offending me, Councilman Gentry, by questioning my pricing at all. As a matter of fact, I would almost prefer, if you table this and let it go to, to a bid, because I stand by my pricing. I, I have nothing to hide. I've been doing work for the county for 15-plus years. And so, I, I, I welcome it. I have no, no qualms with it at all. I just would like to make sure that whatever we're bidding against, it's equal to what we're presenting. And it's not, you know, somebody that you order stuff online from, it's a reputable company that will stand behind the products that they install. That's all I ask.
Got a couple of questions. Warranty on these, what, what is the warranty on them?
Five years. And actually, we will cover the parts and labor as a part of that, just because essentially with cameras, the thing that goes wrong with them is they were installed incorrectly, typically, for outdoor cameras. So, if there is a problem in the next five years, we'll cover that. And so, parts and labor.
And there's no, no way that you'd be coming back with a problem, it wouldn't work with our software?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I'd come with a question, a technical question. Is that, so, what is advertised is the outdoor, and they've been kind enough to come back with a bid for the complete package. So, my question is, is can we even vote on the complete package at this point?
No. No, you, I mean, not without, and it, I mean, I, I did not review the advertisement, Councilman Gentry, but my strong assumption is it listed the amount specifically in it, and with that, that limits your ability tonight to, I mean, you can approve what has been advertised for tonight, but the entire package would have to go through a proposal coming into the council, that being published to the newspaper for March's meeting, which I, we would still have time to do.
I apologize. I don't have a copy of what everyone else is looking at. Does anybody have an extra? Do they might get mine by chance? Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Second question is, that I've got tonight, is this is not, not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of the lit.
That's right.
And there's money in there to pay for the, the addition through the lit.
Okay.
Yeah, so, what was advertised for tonight was the 38151. Out of lit special purpose, 1114.
Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, Mr., so, I would have a question. So, if they tabled, what was that tonight? It doesn't do any good to table what's that tonight if they want to do more, because...
If, if they tabled tonight, we would still need a new request for the entirety of what the new proposal was, which I guess would include what we're talking about tonight.
Right.
So, you're correct in that in order to get the entire package approved, we are definitely going to have to come back. It's just a matter of...
Correct.
If there's any desire to break it up or approve it in its entirety at one time.
Councilman Gentry? Do you have a question? Last one?
I have a question. This is just for my own education. Again, I'm, I'm new, so I apologize. I would say we should always keep business local when we can, but I, for the life of me, don't understand, if we're spending taxpayers' dollars, why we wouldn't get quotes.
Right.
That doesn't make sense to me.
I agree.
And, quite frankly, it backs up his position, meaning no one can ever accuse him of colluding with anyone or being in bed with somebody. If he's got the best price, then everybody's going to know that he earned it. No different than when someone comes to Top Guns. I don't want county business unless I've been bid against.
We, we did have another, we did have another quote. When we first started this process several months ago, we did have another quote, but it was not compatible, and it was not the same system as what everybody else has. That's why we decided to go to this package here.
It was more a home security, you know, Honeywell, I believe, brand.
And I, you know, I agree with what you said, Councilman Ellis. I think the principal issue for this was the compatibility with the software they've already got in the courthouse, on the inside cameras that they have now, that they have familiarity with. But, no, I understand the point, and it's, it's well-taken. It, but again, my legal opinion is that the fact that you are talking about compatibility with existing equipment, you could, you could tailor a bid that says you have to be compatible with this if you want to submit, which, you know, might narrow the bidding pool a bit, but I think that's the, the issue that I've heard from Tommy in talking to him about this for some time, has just been the ability to keep using the system that they've come to use on the inside and adding those outside cameras into it, and making sure those two things are compatible, so...
Moving forward, Michael?
Yes.
Would the bid process be a rule, a council rule, if we wanted to make that an option down the road?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, they're, the, the rule exists already by statute for the, you know, local government section dictates that any public project that's going to cost more than $150,000 has to go to publication, open bids, sealed bids. You know, the Community Crossings Grant would be a good example of that. The paving projects that the council, that the commissioners approve, all sealed bids set at a public meeting, they open them in front of everybody, read the numbers aloud, so everybody, well, projects under $150,000, you're just required to deal with three vendors that you know deal in that service, or equipment, or whatever. And, that's the way the statute directs local government to kind of protect the taxpayers, you know, get quotes. Well, they also recognize that in certain situations, there are other overriding government considerations, like, you know, making sure that we've got the equipment to, and you can build bids tailored to the equipment that you have, but I don't think there was any, you know, anything besides that that went into the decision here. And it sounds like they had gotten another quote that did not line up with it, so... But I have no qualms with going, them going through that process. I just want you all to be aware of what your options are.
Thank you.
Need further discussion? I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to table this, to bid out the entire package?
Motion by Councilman Gentry?
My second motion.
Second by Councilman Ellis.
I just want to add one more thing, where you guys are taking this funding from and what was suggested. That lit special purpose fund, 1114, is available to improve any county-related building with, that has to do with the court system or judicial system or anything like that. That fund ended last year with $9 million in it. So, you have plenty of money to spend. If you want a better system, let's do it. We'll get it going, and the money's there, definitely.
Thank you. Motion on the floor in a second. With no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote.
Nancy Ossoff?
Aye.
Vicky Wager?
Aye.
Steve Ellis?
Aye.
Randy Gentry?
Aye.
Brenda Wilson?
Aye.
Brad Anderson?
Aye.
David Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lincolnbeere?
So, you tabled this, and you want us to get, what, what do you want to bring forth next month?
Mr. President...
If you want three, if you want more estimates, it will be April before we can, we're able to come back with that, because we have to have everything turned into you by this Friday, I believe, for next month's agenda. If you want us to bring back this full quote, we can bring that back next month, since you tabled it. So, I just need direction on what you want.
What, the council's only hamstring is their ability to increase the published amount that has been submitted by the requister. So, if you've got an idea of what the entire package is going to cost, all you would have to do, I think, you know, assuming the council is, is comfortable with this, is, is maybe put a few thousand dollars on top of that in your request, and then the council can amend the final appropriation to whatever that bid that is approved by the commissioners for, you know, so if, if you know that it's going to be less than $60,000, say, you just turn in a request for 60, and the bid, if it's at 56,000, then the council can amend that down to cover it. It's just they can't go up, so...
No, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Exactly. We, we do have a bid for what they want from this company that we could bring forth... We do have a bid for what they want from this company that we could bring forth next month. If we want to do, to expand that to more estimates, it will be April before we're able to bring that to the council. And that's fine, I'm just trying to explain how that's going to work.
My, my thought was, if you, if you turned in a request for, call it 10% more than what's in that number, that was quoted for the entire system before Friday, you could be on the March agenda, it's just a matter of, yeah, if other companies can submit proposals before, I guess, the action meeting, the second meeting of their March meetings. So in that three-week period, the last two weeks of February and the first week of March, if that was a reasonable time period for you to get other quotes, so that action could be taken in March instead of April.
It has to be advertised 10 days prior, correct, to the meeting?
Yes.
So the quotes have to be in 10 days prior.
They don't, those quotes don't have to be in 10 days prior. You just have to have turned in an advertisement that's more than the quotes, that you know is going to be more than the quotes.
Okay.
So that when you come back with the quotes, you can amend the appropriation to whatever the quote that you're approving is. So you're basically just building in a buffer of appropriation to bring it down to the amount that's going to finally be approved, to advance it by a month.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry. By Friday, all you would have to submit is your request for 105,000, when this comes in at 97.
Right.
All you'd have to do is submit that amount, and then you have between now and the first meeting in March to get the bids.
Right, I mean, I assume we could turn in this request right here, and then still get the other proposals.
That's right.
Right. It doesn't have, we don't have to add the 10,000 to it, or whatever, we don't know what those other quotes would be.
Yep.
I could turn in this proposal that they have for the whole system. I could turn this in to, by Friday or Tuesday, because we're off on Monday. Yeah, we can, we can go with that route. And then what they tabled, though, was what we originally requested tonight, was 38,000, whatever. So I'm, I will need to come with a different proposal with this amount next month.
Right.
Correct?
Last question.
And then I could always pull the, what was tabled.
That's right.
Correct.
How many cameras are on this proposal?
20, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 20-something? I'm sorry, I...
Okay. And does this cover everything you need covered inside and out?
Yes.
You're confident about that?
There's 35, I see. You have like 12 existing IP cameras that work now, and they are sufficient, so we were leaving them as is.
And I've not seen those, but I've been told by somebody else today that the quality was extremely poor, and that you could hardly see anything on them.
There are some analog, most of the ones, all of the ones that we have quoted to replace were the analog cameras that you're referring to. The, the ones that are still, that we were considering just leaving them places, they are IP cameras, and they are of significant quality that there is not an issue as far as the quality of the video.
All right. And then, and, and I think this question was already asked, but I'll ask one more time. And this quote then would include everything to make this system complete, there's nothing that would need to be added or upgraded to make them all compatible.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I guess we didn't vote, did we? We voted, did we vote to table? We made a motion to table, we didn't?
We didn't.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah. Lost track here. Additional appropriation 2025-05, Health Department, new equipment, the LifeVac units. Joni, you were pulling that request, correct? Okay. LifeVac, page 18, has been pulled. Additional appropriation 2025-07, Health Department, yes, 05, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong line. 2025-06, Health Department, new equipment, page 19. This is the LifeVac. Additional appropriation 2025-07, Health Department, new equipment, page 20. So these are, she is pulling the LifeVac units, correct?
Pulled the whole request, that'd be the mannequins for CPR, the, everything's in that, we're just relooking for any that other time.
So what is the one that, maybe it's easier, which one are you keeping? Which request are you asking now?
The one you're looking at, for all the small funds that are consolidated, that's the one that we pulled. So the other three things that we would be looking at would be the Purdue Extension Program of falling, and then the one that Chloe Hurst presented on, well, two actually, which was the growing food with the farmer's market and the yoga in the park. And then lastly, would have been the Intrepid Phoenix.
Okay, so we are on page 26. Intrepid Phoenix Program, $27,060, correct?
Yes.
The application for Intrepid Phoenix, $31,045. Purdue Extension Grow Terre Haute Club 2025, $2,960. Summer Yoga Program, $2,040. And Matter of Balance Fall Prevention, $2,219. For a total of $65,324. That is additional appropriation 2025-13. Councilwoman Wilson.
Was the, sorry, was the Phoenix Fitness Program, the one that you emailed us about, possibly changing to a six-month instead of an annual?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the advantage to doing that was to just see if it was working, I guess, and then we could renew for the next six months, or?
There was some concerns that were brought to me, some valid concerns brought to me regarding the program, and regarding the app. And I understand that from the email, from what, what I sent you guys, my email was, I can see us, see you guys not considering the app, but I would like you to still consider the program, the fitness program. And we have to have contracts for all of the HFI funds, and those have to be posted on our website for public. And if you have concerns where you would want us to do a six-month contract with them, and then if we find something better, or we feel this is what meets our needs, then we could finish out the rest of the year's contract. But we still could appropriate the entire amount, but just limit it to a six-month contract, if that's what you feel comfortable with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If none, I will take a motion.
Make a motion.
Counselwoman Wilson makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Counselwoman Alsop has a second. Counselman Gentry.
Point of clarification, so if I under, I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. So the Phoenix application was being pulled from this, so that we would lower the appropriation? Or is the motion that we are now voting on the entire appropriation as, as the $65,324? Because of communications that we had earlier, and then, and then what's being proposed, I just want to make sure I'm, I know what I'm voting on.
You would, you would appropriate the entire amount minus the app?
The third, minus the 31,45.
Correct.
Okay, should I amend my motion to reflect that?
Yes, should I amend the motion?
Motion to withdraw my original motion, and I want to amend it to make the move that we approve the additional appropriation 2025-13, with the exception of Intrepid Phoenix Application of $31,045. And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes. The new appropriation will be $34,279 for clarification. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Counselman Gentry.
The discussion part of it is, is that, is this going to be six months, six months? Or are you just...
What do you feel comfortable with?
Oh.
Counselperson Gentry, what? It makes, makes no difference to me.
We'll leave it to you. How about that?
All right.
You're, you're, you're in charge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes 7-0. With that, honorary resolutions, there are none. Resolutions relating to fiscal policies of the council, there are none. Appointments, Councilman Gentry has been appointed to the Thrive Board, that was not announced in January due to just recently being caucused in. Public comment? Any? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, excitedly.
Aggressive. Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We got to sign, we got to sign.
We have to sign paperwork.
Thank you very much.